Hearings and public comments. Certainly, I am happy to have all of you here with us tonight. We are ready to begin our public hearings. And in our public hearing, if you can let me just borrow the pad. I would like to just read and preface the statement that speakers are allowed to speak on the subject matter pertaining to the public hearing. If you veer off, then certainly we will, you know, stop you. Each person, again, as it relates to signing up for public hearing acknowledges that this is a limited public forum and you are required to conduct yourself in a manner that expresses civility. Limited to two minutes, the use of profane or threatening language will not be accepted at the discretion of the chairman. If you violate the public code of conduct, acknowledgement, you waive the right to address counsel and will be asked to be seated or leave the meeting. So again, let us abide by those. Please give your name and your address. Our public hearings will begin. One A, livability ordinance amendments, animals and foul.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 30th, 2025 at 6:30 PM regarding an ordinance amending Chapter Three, Article One, Animals and Foul of the Charleston County Code of Ordinances.
All right, anyone signed up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Bryant, Anthony Bryant.
Okay.
When was that, when was that rule, before I get started, when was that rule implemented? When was that voted on? We, it's the first time, the first time I ever heard this, the notice you gave. When was that implemented?
So each time you sign up for a public hearing?
I never saw that before.
Sir?
I never saw that before.
So each time you sign up for a public hearing, it's printed at the top of the public hearing document that you're signing up. So, you know, we hope that you read whatever you're signing.
Really? Okay, we'll get right into it. Anthony G. Bryant, President AG Bryant Group, Inc., 2120 Cortlandt Avenue, House Line 29403. Subject matter is public health under the Planning Enabling Act. You see, with that, public health and public safety would be what we'd be talking about right now.
So this public hearing is relative to livability ordinance amendments, animals and fouls?
That's under public health and public safety under the Planning Enabling Act of 1994.
All right.
So that's, that's want to make sure we're not germane to the subject which we're talking about in terms of, in terms of what you're not doing. Okay, now, you are, you are, you are, you, this, this is a critical infrastructure. Emergency services for, for animals, right? And so under Homeland Security Act of 2001 and two, which is the U.S. Attorney, Attorney General of the United States, in, in dealing with, in dealing with animals and public health in terms of the densities of these areas for years, and these donut holes with the cities and, and cities and counties, donut holes. So this particular ordinance is in question. It should be some level of coordination between the cities and counties to have a joint public hearing to ensure that there's no crossover in terms of this ordinance. And for the record, there's 16 infrastructure, critical key assets, right? And emergency services is one of them. Now, in, in 2001, 2002, the U.S. Patriot Act, right? And Homeland Security Act, and I believe the county is not, not in compliance.
Thank you so much. One B, animal services fee amendment.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 30th, 2025 at 6:30 PM regarding an ordinance to amend the portion of the Charleston County Code of Ordinances, Section 2-137, dealing with sheriff's office fees, and to add a provision clarifying animal services fees.
All right, anyone signed up?
Anthony G. Bryant.
All right, Mr. Bryant.
Anthony G. Bryant, Anthony G. Bryant, President AG Bryant Group, Inc., Anthony G. Bryant for 1999, 2006, Charleston County Board of Zoning Appeals during that period of time, Uniform Development Orders was enacted in 1999. And from 1999, in my opinion, to 2025, the county is in derelict in terms of its obligation to dealing with these overlay districts with the cities and the county. The county is not really operated in good faith in terms of the Homeland Security Act of 2002, 2001, with 16 critical assets. Dominion Energy Corporation provides power to the county, doesn't it? It provides power to every municipal county.
So, Mr. Bryant, the animal services fee amendment.
And that's what we're talking about.
All right.
We're talking about a fee amendment. So therefore, you're applying a fee to people. As in, it should be an additional public hearing in terms of any fees, not this one public hearing to separate this, 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 this public hearing from that to an addition of fee under the finance committee to come back to the overall public that you're charging money for something. That's my comment.
All right, one C, HUD Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, CAPR, Public Hearing.
Charleston County is submitting its consolidated annual performance evaluation report to HUD for approval. The Project Year 2024 CAPR provides an opportunity to evaluate Charleston County's progress in carrying out priorities and specific objectives identified in its consolidated plan and its Project Year 2024 annual action plan. All interested parties are encouraged to attend our public hearing on Tuesday, September 30th, 2025 at 6:30 PM.
All right, anyone signed up?
Mr. Bryant.
All right, Mr. Bryant, anything on the HUD Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report?
Well, that's, that's federal. That, that's federal. And you have, you receiving a, a ton of money of recipients through the federal government HUD, in my opinion, that are questionable. The Housing Authority of Charleston County has someone who's pending going to prison. You have other people involved in appointed boards and commissions that are potentially going to jail. And so you're totally disconnected in terms of what's really going on with the municipalities, particularly City of Charleston, and their connection, gentrification over the past 20-some years, the impact on North Charleston and Mount Pleasant and Kiawah and all these high-valued areas creating poverty. So therefore, the poverty is so great because of the inactivity this body shows to overlay districts for, for close to like 20 years, right? Because the zoning and planning does not have a valuation of, of subdivisions. For example, Dominion Energy Corporation, right, is, in my, my opposition to low-income housing positions, deemed me, Senator Tim Scott, appointed me in 2001 under the U.S. Patriot Act, and this is not germane at all. He's pro-Israel, I'm pro-Gaza. And Senator Tim Scott has the power to unpack me with the U.S. Secret Service, Homeland Security, and other people. He appointed me years ago. Under, and my advocacy has been for housing and banking insurance forever, what am I? I'm gonna close out with this, what am I, the Tim Scott and you and others? A paper terrorist? What am I, a domestic terrorist? If, if you in violation of 16 critical assets, emergency services, financial services, you could be deemed a paper terrorist.
So the HUD Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report.
That's already done.
Thank you so much.
Have a nice day.
Have a great day. All right, so we do have 19 persons signed up for our public comments. So by signing the sheet, you hereby acknowledge that this is a limited public forum and you are required to conduct yourself in a manner that expresses civility. All comments will be limited to two minutes. The use of profane or threatening language will not be accepted at the discretion of the chairman. If you violate the public code of conduct, acknowledgement, you waive the right to address counsel, and you will be asked to be seated or, or to leave the meeting. And so we had 19 persons signed up, nine persons signed up on one, on one issue, and then 10 persons signed up on different issues. So I think at this time, I'm going to call the individuals who signed up on the not one issue. We're gonna start with the mayor of Lincolnville, Mayor Enoch Dickerson, two minutes.
I stand here to, in support of the fire station. We have 24 radios that we obtained from North Charleston, returned part of them because there wasn't, wasn't needed. But a notification was sent out about a week ago saying that signal that we have now will no longer be for operation of our radios. So I spoke with Councilman Pryor and Mr. Davis about getting new radios that would, the frequency would be allowed for Charleston County and for our fire department to operate. We have a fire department of full-paid workers and 21 volunteers with a Class III rating. And we have assisted Charleston County in numerous ways of helping fight, fight fire. Our fire department is more than capable to do the work that's in Lincolnville, and I'm asking for some support from the county to help us supply these radios that's much needed for the fire department to operate on a safe manner.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Wendy Lockhart, 10 Mile Overlay.
My name's Wendy Lockhart, and I live at 1404 Chandler Road in Ondaw. I'm here to address a matter discussed during the September 8th meeting of the Charleston County Planning Commission concerning the 10 Mile Overlay. At that meeting, Mr. Joel Evans conveyed the belief that the majority of the residents in the 10 Mile community west of Highway 17 support a zoning change from rural residential three, which allows one home for three acres, to a density of one home per one acre. I would like to clarify that this is not accurate. Over the past three years, I have attended all but one of the 10 Mile community meetings regarding the 10 Mile Overlay. At every meeting where a vote was taken, the majority of the participants consistently expressed a desire to retain the existing RR3 zoning, maintaining the rural character of one home per three acres. In fact, at the final two meetings with the planning department, when presented with documentation indicating a shift to one home per one acre, the community once again asked that the materials be corrected to reflect the original zoning of one home per three acres. Fortunately, the 10 Mile community meetings are recorded, and I strongly encourage your council members to review those recordings for yourselves. It provides clear evidence that the community overwhelmingly supports maintaining the current zoning density of one home per three acres. Unfortunately, during the eighth meeting, the September 8th meeting, Mr. Evans stated that the community supports the one-to-one density. Several individuals tried to correct that record, but were ruled out of order. I respectfully urge you to recognize the 10 Mile community wishes to retain the rural residential area.
Thank you very much. Kyle Taylor, Highway 41.
If I may, can I ask for six minutes, like that other guy got?
You can have two minutes, thank you so much.
Well, worth a shot. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and hello, members of council. My name is Kyle Taylor. I'm a civil engineer, the owner and founder of Taylor Consulting Group, and a lifelong resident of Charleston. I speak today as a private citizen, sharing my remarks freely and grounded in my professional knowledge and experience. The Highway 41 widening project addresses an important five-mile corridor between US-17 and the Wando River Bridge. This project was rightfully designated as a priority in the 2016 transportation sales tax, and since 2018, 12 alternatives have been carefully studied and presented for public comment. Of those, alternative number two, the 434 configuration, stands out. It met the project's 2045 traffic goals with only one limitation, service levels through the Phillips area where a three-lane section is proposed. Importantly, alternative number two accomplishes its objectives without the addition of Laurel Hill Parkway. That fact should carry weight. The current plan appears to mirror alternative number two, but now with Laurel Hill Parkway attached. Laurel Hill Parkway, however, was never part of the 12 studied alternatives. Pursuing it now risks diverting time, money, and focus away from the improvements that have been vetted, proven, and capable of meeting demand. It is my recommendation that Charleston County abandon further pursuit of Laurel Hill Parkway and redirect any funds associated back into countywide road improvements. The reasoning is not because it runs through untouched land, but because alternative number two already meets the project goals, and it is my background understanding that alternative number one is not desired by the Phillips residents, whom alternative number one would most generally benefit. Therefore, I urge the county to move forward immediately with alternative number two, the 434 section. Thank you, and I reserve my remaining four minutes. Thank you.
Richard Haversham, settlement community.
Good afternoon. Richard Haversham, 2938 Bennett Charles Road. I'm up here just to thank Charleston County and the planning department for the work they're doing, you know, helping the community that's on the historical register, you know, do our, um, area character, um, assessment and our overlay district. The only thing we got is that you might need a little bit more help with this process because they're doing a good job. I have no problem with that. They really are doing a good job, and just taking a little bit more time. And the second part I got of this, of Summit Communities on the discharge of firearms in urban, unincorporated area. You know, a couple of months ago, I picked up the news in, I mean, the Mount Pleasant newspaper, and I read that they had a shooting in Philip, that someone in Philip shot in a house in Philip Creek. Here comes the problem. When they say that someone shot in, in Philip Creek resident, it came up Isaac Smalls Road. The only people that lives on that road is a retired minister, a retired nurse, a disabled vet, and a guy that retired from cause of Charleston. And everybody's over 70 years old. And when they put that in that newspaper, what they did, they demonized the Phillips community, you know? And when the police came out, they didn't see no bullet holes in this guy's house. So, you know, I'm for it. I don't want nobody to shoot by my house neither. You know, I'm totally for that part, but I don't want this new resident to come and demonize a community when it don't need it. So when you put this in, in, in perspective, that there should be some feedback when somebody do, you know, make a unwanted report to the police, to police department and demonize this, um, community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. John Zogler, thank you.
John Zogar, 5528 Frisco Lane, representing the Johns Island Task Force. I'm actually here to thank you. Thank you for denying the proposed rezoning on Kane Slash Road on Johns Island. That was unanimous, I really appreciate that. Thank you for directing staff to determine how they can use the state of our infrastructure and the recommendations to you for rezonings. That's gonna come up hopefully in the next several months, and I hope you passed out too, so thank you. And finally, thank you, thank you for taking a methodical approach to develop a 2026 TST referendum. So you're not gonna hear it probably a lot tonight, but thank you very much, appreciate it.
Michael German, ordinance 2087, Charleston County.
Michael German, 1707 Snout Road, Snout, South Carolina. I'm here to address council on ordinance 2087, an ordinance that prohibits annexation as a prerequisite for obtaining sewer service within Charleston County. This is still an ongoing problem for all residents in the rural area, unincorporated area of Mount Pleasant. Your ordinance, county ordinance adopted in September 2019, clearly states that this is unacceptable. However, Mount Pleasant Water Works and the town of Mount Pleasant still uses this form to force residents that are living in these unincorporated area to, requiring them to annex to get the service. This is an issue, this is an issue that we need to address. It's been back and forth, back and forth for the last seven years, and we need to get back on, this back on the agenda so we can get some conclusions. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Angela Singleton, 10 Mile Overlay District.
My name is Angela M. Singleton. I live at 3822 Temasculane. In 2021, the community members were told if we began a historic district, it would prevent subdivision developments like what we are facing now. So we formed the committee and applied to become a historic district, which was approved in 2022. We drafted the area character appraisal in 2023 and submitted it during the July 2023 HPC meeting when the developer, three major subdivisions were being reviewed. We were told that the, that Charleston County didn't have a mechanism for approval and use of the ACA so subsequently, when the historic preservation ordinance was being revised to remove subdivisions, plaque, application approval from the HPC purvey, a provision for acceptance. ACA was added with the requirement of 51% of the district registered voters signed in support of the ACA. The amended HPO was adopted in May 2024. We received planning staff comments, which were mainly for formatting and citing sources and permission to use, which is that we included. We kept hearing about implementing our overlay, so we put the revision to the ACA on hold for a few on working with the staff to develop the overlay. After the draft overlay was publicized, we, we found out that the overlay isn't going to protect us from the subdivision. Additionally, another historic district that, that's working on the ACA mentioned that we now have to pay for voters' registration lists, which we'll also now have to sort through to identify applicable parcels to have registered voters sign in support of the ACA. Obstacles continue to put, to be put in the pathway of the Gallegi Chi community. We can't stop people from selling land. What we can, can be done to help the majority who are affected by the, the decision. Having one or two or even three totals don't seem to be enough to protect our communities. What will?
Thank you so much.
And can everybody stand up that's here to support the overlay, please, from 10 Mile?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Martin Levinson, Elbit.
Martin Levinson, 1771 Opel Avenue in Charleston, South Carolina. The Israeli government has deemed it anti-Semitic to list the names of dead Palestinian children that have been killed in Gaza, and consequently, that anti-Semitic designation has also made it illegal in Israel. So I have a poem in which that style of anti-Semitism is addressed by a Mr. Michael Rosen. Don't mention the children. Don't name the dead children. The people must not know the names of the dead children. The children must be nameless. The children must leave this world having no names. No one must know the names of the dead children. No one must say the names of the dead children. No one, no one must even think that the dead children have names. The people must understand that it would be very dangerous for the people to know the names of the dead children. The people must be protected from knowing the names of the dead children. It would spread like wildfire if the dead children's names were known. The people must be spared knowing the names of the dead children. Don't remember the dead children. Don't speak of the dead children. Don't mourn the dead children. Don't say dead children.
Bill Young, morality and civility.
Please, let's not, uh, this is not theater. Bill Young, 210 Promenade Vista Street, here in Charleston, South Carolina. I've always got great timing when I come up here and follow someone up. And we got some good news, and we've got some concerning news. The good news is, is I'm very glad to see we're taking the oath on October 24th and 30th. Glad to see we're making the right decision. Why are we talking about foreign policy at the county level? I'm confused here. If I'm a large business that is looking to come here, I'm highly second-guessing my decisions when we can be swayed and susceptible to changing lawful contracts, to people just protesting something that's happening in a whole other continent. You know, as a marine veteran, it's very disturbing. And I've recently watched this county council try to use the excuse that the oath issue is outside of your jurisdiction. But two council members here have decided that they want to bring up a motion to revoke a filo agreement, that they should import foreign conflicts into Charleston County. Now, since we're here on foreign policy, I want to remind everyone, October 7th, and who was the victim? And every time when the media claims Israel strikes a civilian site, the media intentionally forgets that they fired from hospitals and schools. Now, back to local, this is a circus that at least two council members have emboldened by bringing your motion to revoke the filo agreement. Because allegedly, this group is vandalizing employees' homes of Elbit and posting about it on social media. And these people come here and blame Councilmember Khabrovsky, Graham, and other honorable Jews for genocide in a country that is doing defense in a whole other continent. While here in this county, members of this county council are patronizing folks who have emboldened us. Thank you.
Bert Morrison, Elbit.
Hello, hello. I'm Bert Morrison, 3848 Chestnut Street, North Charleston. I have two kids in middle school here in, you know, Charleston County, and I'm deeply concerned that our tax dollars are being used to support a foreign weapons manufacturer, that these weapons, these offensive weapons have been used to completely destroy Gaza and murder tens of thousands of kids. And all this to support a modern colonization project. And it's been going on for the last 70 years. This company, they made $321 million in 2024. Why do they need another $780,000 from you and from us? They don't need $780,000. Our teachers need to be paid more. We need to work on our schools. Now, the UN, they put out a really well researched report about what is happening in Gaza, so I'm just gonna read from that. It says, quote, "In all cases analyzed by the commission in relation to the attacks along the evacuation routes within the designated safe areas, the commission found that IDF security forces had clear knowledge of the presence of the Palestinian civilians along with evacuation routes within the safe, the, eh, safe areas, and nevertheless, they shot and killed civilians, some of whom, including children, were holding makeshift white flags. Some children, including toddlers, were shot in the head by snipers. Lastly, as a Christian, I am very disturbed that you end these meetings with prayer, apparently ignorant of the injustice that we are participating in." So I'm just gonna read from Isaiah 1, these are verses 15 through 17. "When you spread out your hands in prayer, I hide my eyes from you. Even when you offer many prayers, I am not listening. Your hands are full of blood. Wash and make yourselves clean. Take your evil deeds out of my sight. Stop doing wrong. Learn to do right. Seek justice. Defend the oppressed. Call, take up the cause of the fatherless. Please the cause of the widow. Please, I am asking you to end our participation in another colonization project. We had one here in the United States, it was horrible. Let's not participate in another one in this modern time." Thank you.
H. Lewin, H. Lewin, pro-Israel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Hanan. I'm a seasonal resident of Charleston. The ideals of liberty and democracy are part of Charleston's DNA. It's part of what makes the city unique, standing firm when liberty itself is tested. Today, you council members are on the front lines fighting pervasive elements that seeks to exploit the city as a springboard to spread an agenda that is not just anti-Israel, but anti-American and ultimately anti-Western. These agitators are exploiting the very freedoms our democracy provides in order to weaken that democracy from within. History warns us of the dangers when cities allow themselves to become ponds in global ideological battles. It fractures communities, weaponizes commerce, and undermines the liberties generations before us fought to secure. Council members, you now have a duty and a unique opportunity by rejecting these divisive voices. You are not just casting a vote on one company, you are affirming Charleston's proud, a proud tradition of defending freedom, of safeguarding Western ideals, and of standing against those who would erode them. You are the dam holding back a rising tide, an ocean of anti-Western extremism, that if unchecked, threatens to drown the very democracy that, that allows us to gather here tonight. Do not let Charleston be the gateway for that flood. Instead, let Instead, let it remain what it's always been, a defender of liberty. Thank you for your courage to stand where history has placed you. I want to thank the sheriff's office for keeping the peace and ensuring that we all have a voice in this, in this very important conversation.
Alfred Peeler, Elbit.
Alfred Peeler, 1133 Arthur Drive. I'm a permanent resident of Charleston County and have lived here my entire life. I'm raising my child here. Um, I'm here with Elbit Out of S C Coalition again. Watching the video from last session, there was a lot of wild claims made, and I just want to caution you guys to stick, keep a clear mind when you're thinking about what you can do with this Fila agreement. So last session, you were told that Elbit is investing in this community as a net positive. Every single dime that Elbit quote unquote invest in our community is money they took out of public coffers to begin with, period. Whenever Elbit sells weapons to kill Palestinians or to hunt down immigrants, because that's how they get rich, they are paid with taxpayer money. Elbit would be insolvent without public money. Money that should be spent to support working class families and communities is instead being used to buy weapons from Elbit. We have neighbors living in the streets, living in food deserts, working multiple jobs and still struggling to make the rent, afford childcare, afford healthcare. When public taxpayer money goes to Elbit to build weapons of war and surveillance, they spread death and destabilization around the globe. The company, its executives and shareholders get rich, and then they spit out a tiny fraction of what they took out of the public money, out of the public coffers to begin with. And we are supposed to accept that that is public investment. Okay, not only is Elbit not an investment in our community, it's parasitic on working class communities. Secondly, we all, all of us are subject to the same definition of genocide, no matter what your personal psychology is, right? As enshrined in international law by the 1948 UN Genocide Convention, and everybody should look it up, attempts to muddy the waters about what genocide is, is just more lies being thrown to obscure this issue. Last month, a UN Independent International Commission tasked to study the situation released its report saying that Israel is committing genocide. They join Amnesty International, the International Court of Justice, Betsalem, and Physicians for Human Rights, which are Israeli organizations, by the way. Uh, Doctors Without Borders, Oxfam, Save the Children International, the International Association of Genocide Scholars.
Thank you so very much.
I'm sure that they will say all these people are antisemites because they're liars. All right, this is happening. It's not going away. It's in.
We don't need any additional commentary. All right, thank you so much. At this time, Araya Weinstein, morality and peace.
Good evening. You know, it's funny, just arriving here from a visit, I just took a trip to New York City, I see what I assume to be most morally rotted city in this country. I now arrive in Charleston, back to my home, and I see this strong contrast, you know? Charleston County stands as a strong light, an example of principled leadership, moral clarity. It's evident in the way that this county conducts itself as a body in the steady leadership of our vice chair, Larry Khabrovsky. I want to thank you for your work. Um, the Charleston County Sheriff's Department for the steadfast way they protect this community and enforce the law. I know that's novel these days, but I wish New York could learn a little from Charleston. Um, I'm reflecting on Charleston's remarkable history, um, part of which is actually the oldest Jewish community in the United States of America. Uh, my family's roots go back in Charleston for over seven generations before the Civil War. We've seen unfortunately that perspective matters because unfortunately, history does repeat itself. Um, in every generation, there are forces, including unfortunate appearances, at this council's meeting, trying to intimidate, silence, destroy us. Every generation, however, stands strong, endures to our faith, stands as a pillar of light under God. I want to address a slight concern that is also serviced in Charleston. I have no idea why this council's meetings have turned into foreign policy. Don't think it's the place, but for some reason, to boycott a local company, Elbit Systems, let me just be clear, this is not about policies overseas. This is direct targeting of local faith. This is economic stability and future growth of our country, the defense contracts this country entails. However, that's not so important for this council's meeting. Tonight, I really just want to thank the agitators, the protesters. I want to thank them. They make us more of who we are. The more they hate, the more we love. The more we come together, the noise only strengthens us. So I, I want to live proudly as an American, as a Jew, and God directs the history. We'll let the rest take care of it. Charleston County, I just want to thank you council members for protecting the dignity of this chamber and the moral values.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you very much. Triva Williams.
My name is Triva Williams. I live at 5501 Rio Street in Charleston Farms in Councilmember Warham's District. I want to start off with thanking the two council members who have stood with unwavering support for the Palestinian people. It's rare to see public officials take a stance that won't benefit them politically, but solely benefits humanity. So thank you. I want to thank you both for your votes to ask staff to look into Elbit and the tax break that they are getting on the backs of our children of Charleston County. The painful reality of knowing we are taking money from the education of our own children here and giving that financial incentive to Elbit to kill children elsewhere is heartbreaking to me. When I was thinking about what words to write that could possibly sway some of you to seriously consider ending the contract with Elbit and other weapons manufacturers, a part of me thought, save your breath in your Tuesday night. But I thought over the last few years, I have seen y'all be sensible. I have seen this council work across political lines and accomplish things that councils before you have not. So I'm here, using my breath and my Tuesday night. But I come here to remind you that across our country, count communities decide all the time the ways in which they want their taxes spent and the ways that they don't want their taxes spent. And you have heard, meeting after meeting, from countless community members that don't want our taxes given to support the slaughtering of the Palestinian people. That sounds like a reasonable request from your community. I think the majority of those who have called for an end to the Elbit contract would be in favor of ending all of our weapons manufacturer contracts. Why do we give tax breaks to companies killing human beings? We don't need these companies in Charleston County. Wouldn't it be a powerful, hopeful message to send the county, our country, and the world that we value human life no matter where that human lives? How would we change as a community if we said no to business, businesses profiting from violence? What message would that send to our children? The children of Gaza, the children in Israel, the children all over the world of Charleston County publicly stated that we are not open for business for companies that profit off the death of any child?
Thank you so much.
I ask that you do what's right, end these contracts, and make a commitment to never sign them again.
Thank you very much. And lastly, Brian Holman, Elbit. That's the last one. Thank you so much. All right, thank you so much. Brian Holman.
Hi, Brian Holman, 5329 Deep Blue Lane. I'm sorry if I speak different. I don't use Chat G P T to write my speeches. My name's Brian. I'm an American. I'm with an organization called 5051. I think you guys might have heard of it. We're the protest group in America behind No Kings. I'm letting you know that we've taken serious attention to what's going on, not only in South Carolina, but the world. Fact of the matter is, we're bribing Elbit Systems to bring subpar jobs here. There's three classifications of employees, right? You have your engineer, you have your project manager, and then you have your hourly labor. In the Charleston County area, every single one of those is below the national average of Elbit. So aside from the fact that we're killing people overseas with the genocide, we're actually getting a bad deal out of Elbit if we're bribing them with $752 million. We're getting subpar jobs. We really are. We're getting paid less than the national average. So how is that something that's benefiting the Charleston people? It's not. It's benefiting a select group of people, right? It's benefiting everyone who takes APEC money, and it benefits everybody. And I mean, everybody who's taking money from the, uh, the weapons, the international weapons, uh, organizations. That's all it's benefiting. That really is all it's benefiting. It's not doing anything for the people of Charleston. We're getting subpar jobs. We can have jobs building, uh, fire trucks. We can have jobs building ambulances. We can have jobs that have the same level of technical expertise and higher pay. But no, we build weapons. Why? Because we've been bribed, because we've been infiltrated. Now, before I go, I just want to say again, I'm Brian, Shalom alaikum, and I only have one passport. That's all I'm saying.
All right, we will now have a prayer from Chaplain Roy Gould from the Coastal Crisis Chaplaincy, and we'll have a pledge coming from St. Tonya Aiken, Accountant Three in the Finance Department and a member of the current cohort of emerging leaders. So at this time, we will have a prayer from Chaplain Roy Gould. So at the very beginning, I delineated the fact that there were several individuals that signed up on the same topic, and we were going to, and we were going to take, uh, based on the number of, not the time allotment that we had, the number of those individuals that would be appropriate for that time allotment. And then those who signed up on a different topic, they received two minutes. And so the two minutes were, were divided among the ones who signed up. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Chaplain.
Would you join me in prayer? Almighty God, we pray for this council meeting tonight. Give each council member the wisdom, the guidance, as they deliberate on the items that is for you. Help them to make the right decision, Lord. Guide them in your glory. Hold them in your loving arms. And Lord, let your light be the light that draws them, that whatever's said, whatever's done, that your Spirit will fill every crack and crevice, not within this building, but within each heart. Because, Lord, remind us that we all are created in your image, and we call you Father, and you call us your sons and daughters. So Lord, let the light so shine that we may see your light and your goodness. Amen.
Amen. The Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings and agendas were posted and distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Uh, item two, min. Second. Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Oppusers, nay. The ayes have it. Uh, let's take in section three, three A and B separately. Three A properly moved, is it seconded? Yes, sir. Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Oppusers, nay. The ayes have it. At this time, the clerk will read the resolution.
And if we can have Dr. Funcell.
Dr. Funcell and Mr. Councilman Pryor.
A resolution of Charleston County Council, National Recovery Month, September 2025. Recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community. Whereas mental and/or substance use disorders affect all communities nationwide, but with commitment and support, people with these disorders can achieve healthy lifestyles and lead rewarding lives in recovery. And whereas by seeking help, people who experience mental and/or substance use disorders can embark on a new path toward improved health and overall wellness. And whereas the focus of National Recovery Month this September is to celebrate their journey by spreading the message in communities that behavioral health is essential to overall wellness and that prevention works, treatment is effective, and people recover. Now therefore be it resolved that Charleston County Council does hereby join in the observance of and proclamation of the month of September 2025 as Recovery Month. Also, whereas addiction professionals are uniquely qualified frontline healthcare professionals, and whereas these dedicated professionals are committed to increasing public knowledge of addiction and to enhancing the care of individuals, families, and communities through treatment, education, and prevention programs. Now therefore be it resolved that Charleston County Council does hereby join in observance of and proclamation of September 20th, 2025 as Addiction Professionals Day. Charleston County Council, Reverend Dr. Kylon Jerome Middleton, Chairman, September 30th, 2025.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Of course I would. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, members of the council, for continuing to honor the work with you here in Charleston with this resolution every September. September and October are really special months for us because September is National Recovery Month and October is National Prevention Month. And I have some people I want to recognize who really embody hope and recovery and are hardworking addiction professionals, and they also really support the importance of prevention in our community. So I wanted to talk about some outstanding addiction professionals as well as some incredible collaboration within Charleston County Government, um, to these ideals in our community. And this is not an exhaustive, an exhaustive list, but these are some pretty important people here with me that I communicate regularly throughout the week even. I think some of the people here I probably talk to weekly or daily even, and some of us work. And so the first two people I would like to recognize are Kelly Brumeyer. She's program manager at Charleston Center. And Sarah Hall, she's our opioid initiative coordinator. They have done phenomenal work on developing our opioid data dashboard, which is the first among drug and alcohol agencies in our state. It provides real time data on how opioids affect our community, how we're doing as far as doing Narcan distribution in our community, um, and areas where we can really make an impact as far as prevention and outreach. They also just finished building our Bridge to Hope app. And this is the first app in the state of South Carolina that provides real time support to our community for people that have opioid use disorders or family members or friends that want to find out how to help somebody, talk to a peer support specialist 24/7. We're partnering with Favor Low Country, which is a community recovery organization that app. And then also Sarah and Kelly worked with a lot of our community stakeholder agencies and just members of the community and doing training, Narcan distribution, and community outreach. The other two addiction professionals that I want to highlight are Rebecca Hesley and Amy Collins, and they are certified peer support specialists at the Charleston Center. They do community outreach, post OTRs follow-up, patient engagement, to help the community get connected to services, whether it be treatment, prevention work, or into recovery. And more importantly, they share their lived experiences with others and the message of strength, hope, and recovery. Next, I would like to recognize D'Artagnan Brownlee. He is with the coroner's office, and you know, the coroner's office is not, you would think of as a likely partner in working in recovery and treatment and prevention, but they do an incredible job in talking with individuals in the community as far as following up on the scene when there's an overdose, if there are people on the scene that benefit from being trained in Narcan or understanding what services are available in the community, they've been right there doing that. D'Artagnan also started Charleston County's first overdose fatality review board that we all get together and staff cases and identify what we can do as a community better so that we can reduce the number of overdose deaths that we're seeing. And he also gives us toxicology reports, alerts, and trends, and data for fatalities in our OD map and our data dashboard. I also need to give a shout out to Prisana because she did an amazing job in helping us with our data dashboard. I also want to recognize Angela Craig with Charleston County Public Library. They have worked hand in hand with us from the beginning as far as getting literature and materials out into the community, author speaking events and book signings coming up the end of this month. We've done youth programming together, recovery book giveaways, and they were the first to have all of their staff trained in Narcan administration, and they put in the locks, boxes in all of their libraries. And I think up here, one time I talked about how they saved a life, um, one time with the Narcan at Keith Sumy Library, and since then, they were able to save a second life with a Narcan at the Keith Sumy Library. So it's critical to be trained in this. Narcan at Keith Sumi Library, and since then, they were able to save a second life with a Narcan at the Keith Sumi Library. So, it's critical to be trained in this. And then, lastly, I can't thank the Charleston County Sheriff's Office enough. Our sheriff has been a partner with the Charleston Center for many years, at least seven or eight, doing post-overdose follow-up and quick responses in the community. And I want to recognize Chief Frosier, Lieutenant Kudron, Caitlin Gally, and I also want to recognize William Malcolm. He's not here with us today, but he said he might be watching. So, William, if you're there, hello. The jail has been incredible partners as far as doing jail warm handoffs into the community. That's Caitlin's baby, and she does a fantastic job in getting people connected right from jail into treatment. They've also worked on jail policy development related to diversion and treatment. They've done community outreach, post-overdose follow-up, maintaining our critical incident management system data and hub, and that's where we, all of the law enforcement, put into the system when somebody overdoses. And we, as a team of Amy, Rebecca, everybody up here, will follow up with family members or individuals to help get them connected to treatment, get them connected to grief support, anything that they need in order to help them move through the overdose situation. And then, if you've looked on Facebook, or you've looked around the community and see these purple boxes all over the place that look like newspaper stands, they're rotating Narcan distribution boxes that the sheriff's office puts out in the community so that people can get Narcan anonymously to help save lives. And we use all of our data, because we're big data people, we use all of our data to see where in the community we need to do those targeted efforts at. So, these are just a few of the efforts that we've made possible, thanks to the support of Charleston County Council with the South Carolina Overdose Recovery Fund. So, those are the opioid settlement monies. Those funds have helped us do all of this work together. And I really believe that that work that we've been doing has helped reduce the number of overdoses in our community. And so, we continue to strive forward in reducing those numbers even further, and this collaboration in Charleston County Government is just incredible. So, thank you for letting me say a few words. And in the back of the room, by Sheriff Ritchie, are magnets that have the QR code for both Apple and Android for the Bridge to Hope app. And I hope that everybody will get a magnet and download that app so that you can help people in the community, or you can see the dashboard as far as overdoses in our community, where resources, meetings, and help is available. So, thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, item three B. Thank you so much, Dr. Funsell, and to the Charleston Center leadership. Thank you all so much for the important work that you do, as well as all the collaborators and those who work across departments to make those things happen. At this time, three B, designating animal shelters. I think there's, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, in light of our recent correspondence from the Charleston Animal Society, I would move to amend the committee recommendation to remove section one from the resolution.
Section one says the Charleston Animal Society, a nonprofit organization located at 2455 Remount Road, North Charleston, South Carolina, shall be designated, shall be a designated county animal shelter pursuant to Charleston County Code, section three-nine-B.
Second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so now, let us allow the clerk to at least read. You don't have to read the resolution.
I don't need to.
Okay, so, Vice Jerk Karowski.
I understand the reason for that motion, but I mean, I'd rather have that done in a committee again, just to do it at the last minute. I know the correspondence from them and the significance of that, but I don't know about if that's the same thing as designating them as a place is the same with them, most strongly. I'm not sure the significance without having a prior consideration of what you said. That's why I couldn't support that. I just don't understand that. I'm not saying it's wrong. I just, coming right now, without any discussion, I'm not sure about the significance of it. Not disrespecting your reasons and view of what happened. I don't understand that it's designating something as being a resource. Is that the same as what in their letter? I just, I don't, I'm not prepared to vote in that.
All right, Mr. Moody.
Chairman Middleton, I would submit, Mr. Kabrowski, that that organization's withdrawing themselves by canceling the contract with Charleston County. I think this motion is very much in order, and we're not, we had them designated last time. They canceled a contract, they withdrew themselves. Thank you, sir.
All right, I believe we voted, but let's do that again, just for, you know, to make certain. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. All right, thank you so much. Items four, third reading, four A.
What was it count?
Mr. Kabrowski voted nay.
Thank you.
Okay. Four A, ZLDR 01-25-00135, Parker's Ferry, Overly District, text amendment, third reading.
An ordinance amending the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance Number 1202 as amended, Chapter Five Overlay and Special Purpose Zoning Districts, Article 5.12, Parker's Ferry Community Overlay Zoning, PFO, Table 5.12.5, Parker's Ferry Community Overlay Zoning District Use Table, to add vehicle storage use as an allowed use for the business service nodes and commercial properties that have frontage on Highway 17 Savannah Highway, if approved through the special exception procedures of the ZLDR. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with eight ayes and one absent.
Four B, Amendments to Livability Ordinance, Animals and Fowl.
An ordinance amending Chapter Three, Article One, Animals and Fowl of the Charleston County Code of Ordinances Number 1702 as amended. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with eight ayes and one absent.
Four C, Amendments to the County Fee Ordinance, TNR Services, third reading.
An ordinance amending those portions of the Charleston County Code of Ordinances, Section 2-137, dealing with the sheriff's office fees, and to add a provision clarifying animal services fees. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with eight ayes and one absent.
Second reading of ordinances, five A, Discharge of Firearms in Urban Unincorporated Charleston County, second reading.
An ordinance adding a new section, 14.5-2, to the Charleston County Code of Ordinances so as to prohibit and make unlawful the careless or negligent, sorry, negligent discharge of firearms in certain unincorporated areas of the county, to provide the penalty pertaining to such violations, and to provide certain exceptions and limitations thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt is absent. Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with eight ayes and one absent.
Five B, Amendment to Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance, second reading.
An ordinance amending the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance Number 1202 as amended at the following document locations, Chapter Three, Four, Eight, Nine, Eleven, and Twelve. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
I don't know what second I'm voting on. Four.
Can I have what Mr. Darby says?
I don't know. I don't have any recollection, is what I'm voting for.
I can pass you the ordinance, if that's helpful.
Yes, please.
Okay. Mrs. Honeycutt is absent. Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
I will not be voting against it. I don't-
Yes, sir. The ordinance passes second reading with seven ayes, one absent.
Item six, first reading, six A. Environmentally acceptable packaging products ordinance amendment.
Is this about the heavy bags?
Yes.
Did we have to get Dr. Donald Johnson to make sure that they don't have this enforcement?
They don't currently, right.
I see.
And I thought we said up to third reading, negotiating with them.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
After, you know, if it doesn't, you know, have Donald Johnson go by third reading, I'll be voting against it.
All right. Properly moved.
Yes, sir.
Properly moved. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye, up to third reading.
Aye.
Okay. Oppusers, nay?
Nay.
Okay, thank you so much. Amend up to third reading. Yes, sir. All right, six B, Chapter Seven Emergency Preparedness. Oh, please read the ordinance. Thank you.
An ordinance regulating the use of single-use plastic carryout bags, plastic straws, and polystyrene plastic foam products, and promoting the use of reusable carryout bags and recyclable paper carryout bags, and other matters relating thereto with the right to amend up to third reading.
Six B, Chapter Seven Emergency Preparedness Amendments.
Probably moved and seconded.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay? All right. The ordinance?
An ordinance amending Chapter Seven Emergency Preparedness of the Charleston County Code of Ordinances.
All right, six C.
Six C, I'd like to have discussion.
Properly moved and seconded. Mr. Kabrowski.
This is, I know we debated this in committee, and because it's a public meeting-
Will you see into the mic so we can-
Oh, I'm sorry. I know we discussed this in committee, and because this is a public county council meeting, I just want to make my reasons clear, that again, I asked, is Project Flare the name of the company? I'm correct, that that's not the name of the company. And I also asked that there's, I wanted to confirm, there's no statutory or legal requirement that we not disclose the name of the companies that we have these incentives for. And my reasons for being against, as a public official, I can't vote for something, I don't know who they are. I don't know how we can do that. There's incentives, and they do a great job in offering these things, but as a county councilman, I can't vote for something, I don't know what it is. And we give incentives to companies, some from afar, some from other places in America, some places, and we, in existing companies that already exist in Charleston County. And as a county councilman, I don't know how I can pick and choose between some companies in Charleston County and some others not given the same incentives. And all the reasons that we hear, that it would encourage business and more people to come, and they can hire more people and spend more money, would apply to anybody that either owns their own business, small or large, and those are the reasons I'm voting against it. Thank you.
Just for clarity, this is a major expansion in response to a critical national security need for an enhanced industrial base to support United States naval vessels. This is in addition to real property. This would add three buildings, a 15,000-square-feet prep paint building, a 60,000-square-feet superstructure building, and 11,000-square-feet amenities, administration building with offices, cafeteria, and gym. And so, you know, again, it's a, an expansion of an existing company. All those in favor, let it be known by saying, yes, Mr. Wareman.
I'll just say, I take a little bit different angle to it than Mr. Kabrowski, but I would say, like, just knowing, getting to the bottom of this question, that I don't really think we've ever gotten to the bottom of, of whether we have to do the naming thing by law, or whether that's sort of by, dictated by the convention, or by the deals that the folks would work out. I do think at some point, finding that out would be a good thing to know. You know, obviously, if this goes forward, then by third ordinance, we will get the name. I mean, by law, we would have to get it at that point, so I'll certainly, you know, we can look into it more at that point. So, I'm willing to move it forward, if for no other reason than to find out the name at some point. But I do think it would be good, you know, to know whether that's a law, or just something that folks are demanding as part of a negotiation.
Ms. Hamm?
So, I'm happy to meet with any council member to talk about that very specifically, either from a legal perspective, or from the perspective of economic development with Mr. Johnson. I believe he is out of town for a conference this week, but at some point, I'm happy to speak with you. I did do some research and had a conversation with Mr. Kabrowski, and do recognize the importance of that.
Okay.
Very good.
All right, Mr. Yes, Ware, Moody, and then, Boykin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Hamm, to further that discussion to the extent we can, do we generally use confidentiality agreements, maybe? I don't know if you guys-
Absolutely.
So, regardless of whether state law says that, or whatever, if we do a confidentiality agreement, we're bound by that, to follow that?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay. I was, I was asked under Chairman Raw, and up through Chairman Middleton, been honored to serve as the chairperson of environmental management. I meet frequently with Mr. Thigpen, with Mr. Tutman, with Mr. Q. Mr. Kabrowski, have you, have you ever met with Mr. Merle, or Mr. Rona, or the administrator?
Bless you.
I think if you, if you haven't, you should, as chairman of economic development. But I talk with Mr. Q all the time about important issues, that he thinks maybe needs to be bubbled up, or just not even, just here's FYI, we had a piece of equipment at the landfill catch on fire last night. Then we need to know about it? Maybe, maybe not. But it was put out in an hour, and that was the end of it. But he just called because we're in active dialogue all the time. So, I know what's going on in environmental management. So, you know, and I also look at it from a tax standpoint. Ms. Rona, I mean, these corporate, these companies pay a lot of taxes. I mean, if we, if we discourage company, I mean, we turn off the spigot on businesses, I mean, who gets to pick that up?
The rest of the taxpayers.
You turn that spigot off, and guess what? Millage is going up. So, if you're in favor of increasing mills, turn the spigot off. So, thank you, Mr. Middleton.
Mr. Boykin? Mr. Boykin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kabrowski, I know what company this is. I've been to its location, I know the work they do, and to say that this impacts our national security would be an understatement. I can't make it more clear, you're going to know who it is by a third reading, and I think, once you understand what they do and what they provide to protect this country, you should be supporting it. Thank you.
If I can-
Mr. Karowski?
If I knew the name of the company, which you do, I don't, I would, you know, and those are the reasons that's different. I'm this, again, saying, I cannot vote as a county councilman if I don't know the name of the company that I'm giving tax breaks and incentives to. It may be the best thing in the world. And if that becomes known, then we could do it. Because my fear is, by doing it two times in a row, we're basically bypassing the system, whereas if it's that good, we should name it each time. I've been here for, this'll be my third year. Every single tax incentive that's ever been proposed has been passed unanimously, or with my dissent. So, it's never been a disincentive, but they're competing somewhere else. And since, you know, and again, that, all the reasons, Mr. Moody, you're correct, that forbid, that would apply to any business. I don't, again, I don't know how we can pick and choose, especially if we don't know who it is. And it is my understanding that there is no statutory requirement, or legal requirement, that we don't name them. There's no statutory requirement that we do not name them. And I'm just saying, as a public official, I can't vote for something I don't know. If it comes on the third one, and it's revealed, and it's, like you said, for national security, that's different. But those are my reasons. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay? The ayes have it. Six D, ZREZ-07-2-
I need to read this one.
Okay. Oh, thank you so much.
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an amendment to a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Charleston County, South Carolina, the county, and a company known to the county and identified for the time being as Project Flare, extending known to the county and identified for the time being as Project Flare, extending the investment period of such agreement, authorizing additional special source revenue credits to be provided to the company, and other matters related thereto.
6D, ZREZ-07-25-00165, 4301 River Road rezoning, first reading. Moved and approved. Okay.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay? The ayes have it. Let's hear the first reading.
Yes, sir. An ordinance rezoning the real property located at 4301 River Road, parcel identification number 2590000123, from the Agricultural Residential AGR Zoning District to the Rural Agricultural AG8 Zoning District.
6E, ZREZ-07-25-00164, Highway 165 rezoning, first reading. Is there a motion?
Committee recommendation, which was for disapproval.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay? The ayes have it. The reading of the, oh, it's disapproved. All right, item 7, 7A, Jeff Gilyard Lane paving project.
Move for items A through C, committee recommendation.
Thank you so very much. Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay? The ayes have it. Item, Finance Committee Recommendation, items A, potential future transportation sales tax.
Move for committee recommendation.
For A only, or?
Mr. Moody wants to go separate.
Oh, I see, thank you so much. Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay? The ayes have it. Nay, okay.
8A.
8B through E?
Yes.
Moved, seconded. And seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay? The ayes have it. Item 9A, probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay? The ayes have it. Mr. Moody.
Chairman, thank you, sir, and I appreciate your, the way you managed our comments and public hearing tonight, kept the public hearing on point. I like, we heard from the, we heard from the mayor of Lincolnville, we heard about Highway 41, we heard about 10-mile community, we heard about water and sewer, and I think Mr. Schnauden admitted that, they got to hire a lawyer. You know, I don't know what else we can do. I mean, what am I missing? You know, we've passed an ordinance, that's all we can do. So, I sympathize with it, they got to hire a lawyer and sue the town, that's near as I can tell about that. But, and then we heard from these other groups, and we heard, I think, a good side of both. So, I thought it was very nicely handled tonight, and I thank you for that. I also want to thank this council for their support of the firearm discharge. You know, I don't think I've seen an ordinance so widely supported across the county as this, just common sense. And I thank council for its vote on this, and I look forward to wrapping this up on our next reading. Thank you, Chairman Middleton.
Mr. Wareman?
I would echo a lot of what Mr. Moody said. I think, in particular, my understanding of the situation with the annexation ordinance is exactly the same as his. And, you know, the more we can make that clear to folks, that there's not, because I just don't even know what the demand is at this point, as to what on our end are they asking for us to do. So, you know, I think this council's been very active in trying to move that forward in the same direction as the community, but maybe there's a little bit of a disconnect on what actually is on the table. So, I hope we can, we can tackle it again, but maybe with an eye towards just being very clear about what procedurally is even possible moving forward.
Mr. Boykin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to take this opportunity to recognize our Public Works Director, Mr. Adams, and all our employees with the Public Works Section. I've had several issues down in my district with clog pipes and drainage that were infecting roads and residents, and also a pedestrian walkway with a railing that was overgrown, and they were just expeditious in getting out there and intending to it and doing absolute top drawer level of service. And for my folks, thank you very much.
Mr. Sass?
Nothing to me tonight.
Thank you very much.